At this time, I will call the Haywood County Board of Education August meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you for being here tonight. Chairman Francis is not going to be here tonight. He is finishing up a couple more days on his vacation that is well deserved, so I'm going to fill in for, in his absence. So I asked my fellow board members to try to keep me on track here, and if I get sidetracked on anything, if you'll help me get back on, I appreciate it. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pleasant pledge of allegiance. Board members, will you please rise?
Let us pray. Congress, Hallelujah, Father, as we come closer to starting a new school year, we pray, Lord, that we have a great start. We thank you for all the administration's hard work in getting everyone prepared, in getting our leaders in our schools, our teachers, everyone coming back. I can already see the smiles, the excitement, and Lord, I thank you for that. And I pray that we have a great start to a new school year. I pray that you keep all the children and their families safe. And Lord, I pray that the rest of the decisions that this board makes is for the betterment of education for the children of Haywood County. God directs us in all that we do, and we give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All right, board members, our next board meeting is scheduled for September the 10th at seven o'clock here at the Education Center. Some other announcements, we have the Teacher of the Year luncheon, so please, you know, go ahead and mark that on your calendar. That will be Friday, September the 7th, at 12 o'clock noon at the Laurel Ridge Country Club. And this is a special time for our teachers, those ones that are nominated for Teacher of the Year, and I know it's, can be a very challenging task sometimes because we have such excellent teachers that work in our school system. So I know it's, it's a very difficult time to choose the very best one, but it is, you know, deserving of those teachers, so please, you know, try to make that luncheon if you can. Also, we have the Fall Bingo that is scheduled for Saturday, September 15th, at six o'clock at the Canton Armory. This is for the Haywood County Schools Foundation fundraiser. Lots of fun, they have lots of excellent prizes that you can win. I've seen them, I've never been able to win them, but they do have them, I've seen them. So, thank you to all the local businesses that's helped sponsor this and donate those prizes to us, and if you can, please try to make the bingo again at September 15th at the Canton Armory. Tickets, $20 tickets.
If you just let Ray and Matt off, if you want them, I'll get them.
Okay, sorry. See Jenny or who else?
Brooke.
Brooke, okay, for those tickets. All right, under agenda adjustments, do we have any items that need to be added to the...
Finance has a couple.
Okay, we'll add finance on number 12 with irregular minutes. Nothing from building the grounds this time?
Buildings the ground is going to let you go this time.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Just wait, we have more coming.
I do have an item that I would like to add right before we do the next item six, the McClure Award, and that's for personnel recognition. So, is there any obje- and also need to take off, item number 10 that's on the agenda is going to be covered under personnel, so we do not need to do a separate approval for item number 10, so we need to strike that. Is there any objection to those agenda adjustments? Okay, being none, we'll make those adjustments and add them to the existing agenda. Next, I'd like to call on Dr. Nolte for some personnel recognition.
Thank you, Vice Chair Francis, board members, guests, and staff. It's my privilege to introduce a couple more administrators to you. We've had quite a summer, and I want to thank you for your many meetings this summer to get us on task, and we want to introduce some new administrators, not completely new, but in new or additional positions. So, Mr. Conner, would you like to introduce your assistant principal?
Members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Jill Barker, I'd like to introduce our new assistant principal at Pisgah High School, Ms. Emily Gephardt. She comes with a lot of experience. She'll get her first high school experience, but she's done middle school, and then, of course, elementary in Haywood County last year. It's, I've been so fortunate to be blessed with a great administrative staff. She's added a little change in the dynamics there. There's two Casys up there at Pisgah High School now, and then the new girl on the blocks came in, and it's been very interesting, but it's very collaborative. I think Ms. Barker set the tone with that. We sit in our, our big, our big desk there, or the table, and we work together, and we've got a lot of things done in a short period of time, and she stepped right in. She's loyal, she's smart, and I'm happy to have her, Ms. Emily Gephardt.
Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and board members, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to help lead at such a special school in an exceptional county. I look forward to serving the students and families of Pisgah High School this year. I'd also like to thank Clint Connor for his guidance and continued support in my career. Also, I'd like to thank my family, because without them, I would never be where I am today. This school year promises to be a great one. I can't wait to get my grill on as a Pisgah Bear.
Thank you, Ms. Gephardt, and we wish you much success at Pisgah.
So, she's transferred from one school to another, then we have a lot of folks from Bethel here, so I don't know which principal wants to do the introduction. I guess Sean Harris would like to do that, but we have someone coming from halftime assistant principal to full-time, two halves at two different places. So, Ms. Harris, you would do the honors?
Members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, it is my privilege to announce that Amanda Watson is heading our way, and we could not be any happier. She has been a respected member of the Bethel community for many, many years. She, some of our rising eighth graders had her as a fifth grade teacher, and we truly believe that it's going to make a better transition for our rising sixth graders to see that familiar face as they move to their new school. But, like I said, she is just greatly respected, and the Bethel family just feels truly blessed to have her coming our way, so thank you very much.
Members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, I want to say just a couple things. Ms. Barker encouraged me to be an administrator years ago, and along with my father, but she, you know, she's one of the main reasons why I'm here, so thank you. You were an influence on me and will forever be. And then I've got two of the best administrators in the history of the world, but I get the pleasure of working with both now. And so, what a blessing it is for me to have such leadership, and I'm looking forward to, I've enjoyed the few days I've been in this role so far, and so I do hope to bring a lot of Bethel love and pride. I take that community very seriously, and I love the people there, and so I'm just very privileged. I thank you for this opportunity, for all of you, and I look forward to working there and at both places, so thank you, and thanks again for this opportunity I look forward to. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And then, Mr. Burnett, if he would come and introduce his new assistant principal coming to us as an assistant principal for the first time. Byron?
Members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, I come here tonight to introduce Clyde's new assistant principal, Ms. Amy Tiller. Ms. Tiller is certified kindergarten through 12th grade, has taught at several levels, several schools at all three levels, and most recently, she taught at Kent Middle School, 7th grade science. We're just super excited to have someone the caliber of Ms. Tiller at Clyde. She's a Clyde girl, her, all three of her children went through Clyde, they've served the Clyde community for many years, and I'm just really, really excited to have her on staff at Clyde. Ms. Tiller?
Members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker. Thank you so much. I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to serve the Clyde Elementary School community. I love the people of Haywood County, and I'm so excited about this new adventure of being an assistant principal. I also want to thank God for putting all of these people in my life and providing me with leadership and direction, and I'm just looking forward to this year as I get to work with all of you more closely. And I want to thank my family, Anthony, and Alec, and Emma Grace, and Ella, for just standing by me through all of the journeys that I, and adventures that I take us on, and you always are encouraging and supporting me, no matter if it's to run a race, or go on a crazy vacation, or whatever. You all are always there, and I would never be here without you, so thank you. Thank you all, and I'm so excited about this journey that we're getting to go on together, and I know it's going to have some rocky spots and some smooth spots, but it's a gift from God, and I'm so excited to be part of it, so thank you.
I think we've got some really good assistant principals out there, so I think we're going to have a wonderful school year, and I'm very excited about the potential of what this year's going to bring. Next on the item is number six, Dr. Nolte, the McClure Award.
Members of the board, again, staff and guests, just wanted to give you a tiny bit of background, I don't want to steal any of Tracy's thunder, but for about 15 years now, there's been a Go Global travel of teachers from North Carolina to other countries, and they've been all over the place. They've been in Mexico, they've been in Holland, and typically, the teachers who go are secondary teachers, they may teach a second language or a history, and this year, we were so blessed to have Tracy Brooks be nominated from our county. There's a pretty stringent, stringent selection process with a committee and points, and she was selected to go to China. So if you'll come on up, I'll say a couple more things while she's coming. I want to give a special thanks to James McClure, who has sponsored, the James McClure Foundation, who has sponsored these trips through the years. He did it independently before there was a North Carolina Go Global, and he continues to do that for our county. It's just a blessing that we have. So Tracy, we're excited to hear about your trip.
I'm excited to hear about it. So, thank you guys so much for having me here. I've been trying to spill everything I know about it, and I told Dr. Nolte, I said, "I could talk about this for an hour." He's like, "Please don't." It's really early this morning, so, but I do want to share some parts of my trip, so I appreciate this opportunity to do that. And I don't know who was on the committee, I wasn't told that. This random application showed up in my email, and Go Global North Carolina, I'd never heard of it. I even went back to look in my emails to see if I had gotten it the year before, and sure enough, I had, and so I was like, "Oh, I have heard of this," you know, and I'd even opened it up. I had, I had looked at it, but I did not remember seeing it, and it just showed up one day, and I thought, "You know, what the heck? Let's just try this and see where this goes." And I was so excited about filling out the application, and my brain just started going crazy with things that I could do with this experience, and so I just, I just let it all out, and so I don't know who was on that committee, but I appreciate that opportunity, and I'm very thankful that I got to go on this trip. I met some wonderful people, and on the, on this journey, I actually traveled with the 2017 North Carolina Teacher of the Year, and I traveled with the new 2018 North Carolina Teacher of the Year, and lots of district teachers of the year. So on the bus from place to place, I was scooching up. So what do you do? How do you do things in the classroom? So, I was taking notes like crazy on this journey, and just created a special bond with the, this team of 35, well, 34 teachers, 35 including me, basically from Murphy to Manio. And we went from the mountains of Cherokee County all the way to the beach, and it was a fascinating experience with lots of great people involved, and I'm very thankful. I do want to just share with you very quickly, just some highlights. So let's see if we can... Listen, yeah, go ahead. This is a little bit about Go Global there, just a kind of quick thing. They want to immerse teachers in different cultures so they can bring that opportunity and that experience back to the classroom. And if they could take everybody, they would. That's their, that's their goal. And it, and honestly, with my experience there, it's created that knowledge in me to where I can go back and speak more fluently about the Chinese people and how they behave, and how to interact with them, and things like that. So that was so valuable for me, and anybody, next year, they're going to Mexico, the year before, they went to Germany, and anybody that goes on those trips, any teacher takes that straight back to their classroom, whether they're teaching English, or math, or science, or whatever, they can take that back. But it was a 10-day trip, it was a half a day there, half a day back, and then we're going to get together again in October. We have to write a unit based on our, our standards in the grade level that we're teaching, and so we go back and share what we've been doing in the classroom, and what we've been doing in our school, and present that to our colleagues again. So we kind of had, we had a training in April trip, and then another meeting in October. This was, these were the goals for North Carolina China, Global, Go Global North Carolina China trip this year, and thinking about history, culture, how they're using technology in the classrooms. We looked at alternative education tracks, and we collaborated with teachers there and teachers among ourselves, so that was nice. First stop was Beijing, and so we went to the Great Wall, that was our very first stop the following day after we got there, the Forbidden City. Okay. The next day, we hit the Beijing Royal School, and this was the school that we were very excited about attending because we had an opportunity to get into the classrooms with the kids. I was with a second grade bunch there, and boy, were they squirrely. But I'm pictured with the principal and the owner of the school, and it's a private school, so it was interesting to compare the private schools to the public schools, and they were very different, very, very different. This was a, this was a very well-built, beautiful school, but not a lot of structure within, not a lot of curriculum. The teachers were kind of on their own, there was no, nothing. They just kind of taught what they thought, "Oh, second grade, yes, they could probably teach, they could probably learn this at second grade." So there weren't standards, there wasn't anything, so it was very interesting to be in that classroom and talk to that teacher. And this is outside the Beijing Royal School, this, these are all of our delegates. There were, like I said, there were 35 of us, and, you know, each of us got separated into grade levels depending on which school we taught. So we had, my roommate was in, was a high school art teacher, and so she was in an art classroom, and then my, and of course, I had elementary student, I mean, teachers that went into elementary schools, so, okay. Then we headed south on a high-speed train to Nanjing, which is in the Jiahangsu province, and one of our first stops was the Memorial Hall to the Victims of the Nanjing Massacre in Japan attacked Nanjing in December 1938, I'm sorry, 1937 through January 1939. I'm sorry, got my dates mixed up. December 1937 through January 1938, just a couple of months there, and in those two months, they killed 300,000 people. Just cruel war crimes and things like that, so that was one thing that our God was very adamant about us seeing while we were there. And the memorial was also built around an actual burial ground there. This was one thing that I brought from that. Some of the things, some of the exhibits in that, I just, I couldn't look at, just because they were so horrific, I had to move on. But this was one thing that really touched my heart was this, and I don't even know how to say her name, but she was a survivor, she made it through, and she said, "Remember history, but not with hatred." And I think that's something that applies to us in America, because we need to remember our history, we don't need to do away with it, but we need to, we need to learn it, remember it, but not with the hatred that seems to be surrounding us now. We visited the, this is still in Nanjing, we visited the Zhangjia Gate, built in 1360. It was the gate around Nanjing City, had several layers to protect from attackers there. Beautiful. Okay. Then we took a plane from Nanjing to Chengdu, and of course, saw the pandas there, and hit the Jingli Street, there's a Buddhist temple. They also had a 2,000-year-old irrigation system that we learned about, and, you know, that's interesting for kids in science to think about, you know, weather, and crops, and planting, and erosion, and things like that. So I'll be taking that back to my science classes there. Okay. And we visited a lot of schools, and we met with a lot of school boards while we were there. This is a middle school that was represented, this is about 500 children, and it's cut off just because the picture wasn't long enough to get them all on there, but they showed us some of their, some of their traditions, and some of their music, a lot of the music, you know, you hear the Chinese music whenever you go to the Chinese restaurant, that's what they were playing, that's what those kids were listening to. And, and this is a little girl that you got to go and do the dance with the students and be a part of that, so that was, that was a lot of fun. This is just some examples of things that we were doing in the schools. We had some students who performed, had a little girl paint a mask, and we got to be in the classroom in the upper left-hand corner where they were showing us techniques that they used in teaching their students, and this was a public school, so it was very, these students were very well behaved, and very talented, very respectful to their teacher. We were very impressed with these, this bunch. Like I said, we sat through lots of board meetings in all three cities that we went to. We met with school officials and asked questions, they asked a lot of questions of us, and just comparing ideas and getting ideas that we can take back into our classrooms. I won't get into this a lot. This slide I actually created for our presentation in Buncombe County tomorrow morning at a professional development they're doing there, but we had to use Google Translate a lot to communicate with the, with the people, and I'm going to tell you, Chinese people were excellent. They were so sweet and so nice, and all three cities, we didn't run into anybody that wouldn't help us, and because we got to, we were in the moment, in the city, in the culture, where we couldn't read anything. Their street signs were in English, but their products weren't, and so we had to, we had to figure this out on our own, and to have that experience, take it back to our kids, I'm already, and I'll share this with you in a second, but I'm already wanting to put some, some instructions or some things in Chinese for my kids, and they had to use the Google Translate with the camera and figure out what their instructions are, so they had that experience with that. And that is teacher in simplified Chinese. And this is how we still communicate with our group. It's an app called WeChat, and it works around the Great Firewall of China. We got there, and we thought, "Oh, my goodness, how are we going to do this? How are we going to communicate?" Because they don't do Google, they can't get out, they don't have TV programs and things like we do. There's a big, of course, it's a communist country, so they get control over what these people see and hear. We still continue to use our WeChat, and it's, we found out that the people of China were starting to use WeChat to pay at McDonald's, or pay at their restaurant and things like that, and we're like, "Ooh, we'll try that, we'll put our credit card on here," you know. They said, "Oh, no, no, that's foreign money, you can't do that." So, but we found out, whenever we got back, that Facebook is looking into that. Y'all heard that? Facebook's looking into having a part where you can pay from Facebook, so starting to do a little bit of research with that, so. It's a little scary, if you ask me. So here's what I want you, what I want you guys to know that I'm taking away from this, because I feel like this has been such a blessing to get to go, I want you guys to know what I'm going to be doing in my classroom with this experience, and I want to tell all, every teacher that this is a possibility, you know, it's going to come through your email, your principal's going to send it to you, take advantage of it, try it, put some things in there, decide what you would like to do in your classroom. I want my kids to know, and this is something that I put in my, these first two statements I put in my application, I want my kids to recognize others' perspectives with respect. I want to bridge those barriers that hinder us through language, geography, economy, and lifestyles, and that's what I did in China. And I want them, through me, to have that experience, even though they're not there. I want them to see themselves as participators in this world and not just onlookers. Some of them think, "Oh, I've never been out of Haywood County," or "I've never been out in western North Carolina," and I don't want them to feel that way. I want them to feel like, "You're part of this world too. You've got to learn how to grasp it and, and live in it." I told you about how I'd like to do some directions in assignments given in Chinese, we're going to be working with some pen pals from one of the schools. CSO is a website, some of you may have heard of it, but where they can, it's kind of like Facebook, but it's private, and the kids can post on there, but I want them to post some things that they're learning about China, but also their parents get involved, and I want their pen pals from China to have their accounts set with us so that they can see each, what each other's projects are looking like, so they can share those. My kids will be working with some language-type things with an app called Duolingo, and I know they use that in high schools. My daughter shared that with me. So, thank you. We're going to be exploring some local Chinese music and food, and I want my classroom, if not every classroom in our, in our school, to have some sort of global resources, books and things where, okay, this is what that Chinese language looks like. They read from left to right like we do. They don't, you know, some languages turn from the back to the front, and just having that experience with, with language and with words. And then, I want our school to start an initiative that will help the people in China in some way. I want them to brainstorm ways that maybe they could make the water quality better. We weren't able to drink the water over there, we had to drink out of water bottles. You know, the air quality is, the smog is everywhere, we couldn't see part of the Great Wall because of the smog. And through education, how to help their children, something like that, I want them to, to brainstorm an initiative of how can we help these, these folks, so that way they're aware of what's going on. And of course, then I'm going to have my, my unit that I'll be doing in sides with ecosystems through them, so. And the last page is just information about Go Global, and I, I just want to say one more thing, one more time, that I appreciate the opportunity to represent Hazelwood, to represent our county, to represent our state, and in this trip to China, and I am, I'm just humbled every time I think about it, that I got to go. I mean, who gets to go around the world? But the last thing I want to say is, this story started in Costa Rica. It's a, it's a story for another day, another time, but I'm very thankful, very blessed, so thank you.
Ms. Brooks, thank you so much for, for sharing your experience with us, and I can tell that it was very life-changing for you, and I'm sure you'll, you'll take that and, you know, share that with your kids, and that's just going to make them all the more richer for the process. So thank you so much for doing that. Next on our agenda is Mark Shepard.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. So tonight, I'm here to kind of give you a rundown of the student random drug testing program that we went through this past school year at our four high schools. Of course, we test at Pisgah-Tuscaloosa, Central Haywood- Of course, we test at Pizca, Tuscola, Central Haywood, and at the Early College. And typically, we'll test four or five times, and we try to line these up where it's convenient with our DOT drug test for our bus drivers, it kind of works out better when we do those together. So the first test we conducted this past year was in September. We tested sixty-five students between the four sites, and we had one positive test, which we felt really good about. The second test was in November, we had two positives. And by the way, all the positives this year were marijuana, and I'm not going to say just marijuana, but they were marijuana this year. The third test we conducted in March, and we tested sixty students this time. The difference in the number of students, sometimes it's, if it's a workday, or, I think one of the days, we went to one of the high schools, there'd been a big field trip, and a lot of the kids were gone, a couple of bus loads, so it don't always work out to get the exact number that you want. So anyway, the third test in March, we tested sixty students, and that time, we only had one positive, so it was one, two, one, and then the fourth test in May, we tested sixty-one students, and we had six positive tests that time. So spiked a little bit there in the spring. All of this came at a cost of roughly eight thousand dollars. We spent eighteen hundred the first test, eighteen sixty the second, seventeen twenty-five on the third one, and seventeen forty-nine on the fourth test, so, you know, just a dime under eight thousand dollars for the entire year. And here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shepherd?
Do you have any idea how many students were tested more than one time during the four tests?
I could find that out for you. My estimate, out of two-hundred-and-forty students, probably fifty. And the reason for that is, this, this test is, the list is generated exactly like the DOT test, which is one-hundred percent random, as in, if a kid was tested one time and negative, we can't say pull that kid out, you know? We really have zero control. Once we turn them into the company, that's, they assign a number to the students, and they run, run those numbers through an algorithm in a computer, it's going to select every, you know, every whichever number the algorithms are, and pull out those numbers, they reattach a name to it, send that back to us, we have no control over that whatsoever. If a student tests positive, we automatically retest them, though, so I can guarantee you that many have been retested. Thank you.
That last test you did, what time in April was that?
It was in May.
I mean, May.
May eighth.
After, yeah, after spring break, and after summertime getting there.
Any other questions?
I did want to share that we do use an expanded ten-panel test that tests for a lot of things, you know, and we're glad that the students are not being, you know, found positive with those. But the downside to that is marijuana stays in the system about thirty days, so it's much easier to catch, and it's not like we're trying to get you, but it's much easier to find. The other ones typically, you know, one to five days, and they're gone. I mean, we test for, you know, benzines, ecstasy, amphetamines, barbiturates, opiates, methadone, oxycodone. And we expanded that a few years ago, you know, we were talking about the opioid crisis here, especially in the west of the state, so we expanded to get naturally occurring and synthetic drugs, opiates, so, I mean, we have a very complete panel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shepherd. I feel like that's something that we definitely need to keep doing, and it's, it's well worth the money that we spend on it.
I think it is, and especially the way that our policy is written, to make it very nonpunitive for the students, mostly ends up being informative for the parents, they're in a position to help for their kids, or at least be involved in what happens from then on.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay, next, Ms. King, have we had anybody sign up for the open session? Okay, thank you. Item number nine is the minutes from our July sessions, and we were pretty busy in July, it looks like, because we've got three sets of minutes to approve, the closed session for July twelfth, the closed and open session for July sixteenth, and the closed and open session for July thirtieth. So at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the July minutes?
Make a motion, we approve.
Ms. Barrett made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Clark with a second. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, for those that oppose. Motion carried unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have taken number, item number ten away because that's going to be covered in personnel, unless, Ms. Stevens, you want to get up and talk to us about something? Okay. I didn't want to skip you if you didn't want us to.
Nothing.
All right. So next on the agenda is number eleven, Ms. Stratham, the Title IV Contract.
Members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker. Last month, we went over the Title IV CCIP, our plan for Title I and Title IV, and we talked about hiring two quality, qualified professionals from Meridian, partnering with Meridian to provide these at our high schools, which is much needed for some extra help with our mental health support. They, we've met with them several times, we sat down, I kind of told them what I wanted, and what we wanted as a school system, and they went back and drafted this memorandum of understanding, and I've had our attorney, Pat Smathers, look at this to make sure it was okay, because it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so this will all be paid for out of the Title IV grant, and we're still working out logistics of the schools and how they'll operate, but if you want to take a minute to look at this and see if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Title IV contract.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the Title IV contract, do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bobby, or, excuse me, Mr. Jimmy Rogers made it second. Any other discussion? Being none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Stratham. Okay, next on the agenda is our financial reports from Mr. Henson.
The Finance Committee met earlier, and we went over all the monthly financial reports, and I make a motion that we approve those as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Henson made a motion to approve the regular monthly financial reports. Mr. Patrick second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I think you have another item for us, Mr. Henson.
One more item, a motion to approve the purchase of a vehicle for the Transportation Director, and this is to be paid for out of the local seven-oh-six transportation budget.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for a purchase of a vehicle, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Clark with a second, do we have any discussion?
What are we driving now? Anything?
No. This is for Mr. Shepherd. Previous Transportation Director had a, his vehicle was in the IT department, and they need it, so Mr. Shepherd's left without a vehicle, and him, he'll be checking roads and things this winter, he'll need it.
Big mailbox.
So what was the purchase, have we already purchased it, or you just wanted money?
No, we're making a motion.
Motion to purchase.
To purchase. Have you got a limit on what kind of cost, or you just?
I will defer to the Mr. Shepherd at the cost.
We've got quotes that, from three different dealerships that range from roughly thirty-three to thirty-six thousand for a two thousand eighteen Tacoma four-four four liter drop, basically exactly what, what was there in the first place.
All right. Buy a second. I'm just kidding, Mr. Shepherd.
I think Mr. Henson told me I had to roll up windows.
For the record, he saved us some money, so we're going to let him have air conditioning in it, too.
Roll up windows by air conditioning, okay.
All right, any other further discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, there being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's all from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. I know that's a tough committee to chair, so I appreciate all your, your work on that. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Hines with the Beginning Teacher Support Program.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, remember last month, I came to you with the Title II Plan, which is federal money used to support teachers. This is probably seventy to seventy-five percent of what we use the money for, is the Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Remember, we talked about using mentors from the district level and the school level, and paying those folks to help our beginning teachers get through the first three years of teaching with, with great support. We also do a lot of staff development with this money, meeting with these teachers at least once a month, and so we would ask that you approve the plan as written.
I make a motion that we approve the Beginning Teachers Support Program Plan as presented.
A motion on the floor by Mr. Patrick to approve the plan as presented, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby Rogers, Dr. Bobby Rogers. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
All right, it looks like we have Dr. Nolte up for personnel.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, staff and guests, this is a review of personnel we presented earlier in closed session. For your information, we have seven separation from employment, and twelve employee status changes, and two leave of absence. For your approval, we have thirty-six employments, twenty-seven employee status changes, one contracted service, two substitutes, five employee coaches, one non-employee coach, and two volunteer coach services.
At this time, do I hear a motion to approve personnel as presented?
So move.
Mr. Patrick made the motion to approve personnel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Rogers made a second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you.
Is there any other items that need to come before the board at this time? There being none, meeting adjourned.